The City of Pacifica City Council Meeting of November 30th, 2020. We have a 5:30 PM closed session, which we're going to be talking about Items A and B, Conference with Labor Negotiator and Conference with Legal Counsel. Do we have any public comment on this? I don't see any attendees or hands raised. So I will close public comment and adjourn to closed session. We'll see you in a minute.
Bye Sarah, see you later.
You at 7:00.
I think we're all set to give PCTV the go-ahead.
Okay, go ahead. We good?
Looks like we're good to go.
Okay, great. Welcome everyone to our City of Pacifica City Council Special Meeting of November 30th. It is 7:05 PM. I will call to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember O'Neil.
Here.
Councilmember Beer.
Here.
Councilmember Vatalas.
Here.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer.
Here.
Mayor Martin.
Here.
Suit to the flag led by Councilmember Beer, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, their God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any closed session report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Denise Bazano Assistant City Attorney. Tonight there was no reportable action.
Okay, thank you. And our consent calendar. Are there any council members wishing to pull any items from consent?
I'd like to remove the two items regarding wireless facilities off the consent, please.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Martin, before we proceed, possibly could Clerk Coffee read to the public who are attending the ways in which they can participate in this meeting and how the meeting is being conducted?
Yes, thank you for the reminder.
This meeting is being held by video conference with no physical location open to the public. The public can observe and participate in the meeting via the Zoom link provided in the agenda or by phone to the dial-in number and the webinar ID provided in the agenda. The meeting may also be observed live on local TV Channel 26 or online at www.cityofpacifica.org/livestream. For this meeting, live verbal public comments will be made through participation by Zoom. For members of the public participating via Zoom, use the raise hand button to indicate that you wish to speak on an agenda item when the mayor calls upon that agenda item. For those participating by phone, use star 9 or asterisk 9 to raise your hand to request to speak. The city clerk will call upon speakers at the appropriate time and unmute you to talk after calling you by screen name as indicated on Zoom or the last four digits of your phone number if you're dialing in. Please clearly state your full name for the record at the start of your public comment. Because this is a special city council meeting, public comments may only be made on items listed on the agenda. Written and email public comments will not be read during the meeting but will be made part of the written record and were provided to council members if received by 5:00 PM today. Email public comments are not monitored during the live meeting. The format of this meeting may be altered or the meeting may be canceled if needed. You may check on the status of the meeting by visiting the city's website at www.cityofpacifica.org for any updates.
Mayor Martin, I'd like to clarify, I remove item number two from the consent calendar. Is... You're on mute, Mayor.
I'm having a problem with my system.
You're on mute again.
Sorry, I'm having a problem with my system. If I lose you, I will be back. Yeah, I also want to pull item number one. I think I want to hear from city manager on both of those items. And I do see a hand raised and I'm... If your hand is raised right now, it is for either item one or two. If your hand is raised for not item one or two, then you can lower your hand until we get to item number three. So I can't navigate my Zoom participant list right now because I'm having technical difficulties. Sarah, do you see any?
Yes, Mayor Martin, I see a hand raised by Erin Pickett. I will allow her to speak and I'll bring up the comment clock.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Erin Pickett. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
So I'm just joining this meeting and I don't know if this is the appropriate time but then I was hearing items being pulled from the agenda. I wanted a chance to speak on the installation of the wireless towers in our city.
Okay, yeah, that's going to be item number three. So we'll ask you to raise your hand in just a few minutes after we get done with items one or two.
Got it, thank you.
Thanks Erin. Okay, so do we have to have a motion if there are no other items on consent to approve? Right, okay. So can I?
There's another, nevermind, there's another hand raised.
Hand raised by Erin Macias.
Hi, this is Erin Macias of Lindemar. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil, can you, Councilmember O'Neil, can you please clarify, are you removing one and two or just one or just two? It seems that the letter of support for 530 is something that is directly related to the public hearing tonight, so I'm wondering why that item is being removed.
I'm removing it because the city manager wishes to make some comments about it prior to the council voting.
It's just removed from consent, not from the agenda.
Right, we will be voting and hearing public testimony on it, on the item. It's just removed from the consent calendar, that's all.
So Erin, do you have any comments on items one or two? Otherwise, we're gonna let our city manager speak to them. Consent, we usually sort of just say, yeah, we approve them instead of going into detail.
Right, I'm familiar with the procedure, thank you. Please continue.
Thanks Erin.
We should probably handle the items one at a time.
Okay, let's talk about item number one.
Great, thank you Mayor Martin and Mayor Protem Beckmeyer and Councilmembers Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. I wanted to provide a quick explanation and then answer any council questions before discussion on both the consent items. We'll take them one at a time. So the first one I'd like to talk about on the agenda is the updates to the fiscal year 2021 city council priorities. And in part because one of these priorities directly also is related to wireless facilities discussions. So, you know, through the course of this year so far, after the council's adoption of council priorities in April for this fiscal year, a couple important issues have surfaced during the wireless facilities discussion that the topic of the city staff and the city generally working on revisions to a wireless communication facilities ordinance and updating provisions of that has come up. That's a significant undertaking by the planning department with significant community input and significant county community dialogue. So I wanted to make sure that the council authorizes that revision to the work plan if the council so desires and staff would begin work on that undertaking sometime next spring, given the planning department's work plan priority load. And that's essentially that item. The second priority item to revise is that based on conversations that I've had with the owner of the quarry from time to time, he has expressed interest in moving forward with a specific planning process for the quarry site. And in addition to that, we would add in, depending on funding and budget, when we get there, the Rockaway specific plant site and begin pursuing a city-led specific planning process for the quarry site sometime next spring. So those are the two items, important items, time-consuming items on, you know, that have arisen in importance and recommending that we add them to the council priorities for this fiscal year. And I think the Assistant City Attorney's recommendation was to take this item one at a time, so maybe questions and discussion about this one and then I'll say some words about the second consent item or whatever is appropriate. The mayor can let me know.
We need to have public input on item one or should I make a motion now?
And I believe the mayor dropped.
The mayor has dropped off the call.
Oh, I'm sorry, so.
You want to take over?
I can do that. Let me just grab the agenda on my other computer.
Assistant City Attorney Bazano, I mean, we just did public input on the consent items, correct?
Correct, it sounded like a public comment was requested for items one and two on the consent calendar and there wasn't any, so.
So I make a motion to approve item number one on the consent calendar?
Second.
And can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes.
Councilmember Beer.
Yes.
Councilmember Vatalas.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And I don't see Mayor Martin on the call. If Mayor Martin's available on audio, Mayor Martin's vote. And it seems that she's not present. This item passes with a vote of four to zero with Mayor Martin absent.
Okay, so then we would move on to the second consent item for discussion. And did you want to say something, City Manager?
Yeah, just very quickly, during the staff work on all of the wireless facility issues, it came to our attention that in January of 2019, Congresswoman Eschew had introduced and Congresswoman Spear co-sponsored HR 530, the Accelerating Wireless Broadband Development by Empowering Locals Communities Act of 2019, which was really intended to put a halt to the FCC new regulations that went into effect in January of 2019. And that's really the essence of, you know, what we're confronted with with these wireless facilities and the lack of local control that we have on those issues. So my recommendation is that the council authorize the mayor to send a letter of support for this bill. In talking with Spear's office at least, you know, it's been sitting in committee since January of 2019 and perhaps there's the hope that under a new administration, it might gain some traction this year. So maybe it's a timely time for the city to support that, advocate for regaining elements of our local control over wireless facilities. So that's the recommendation is, I haven't drafted a letter yet, but the bill is very short. It's about a two-sentence bill at this point and so I will immediately draft that letter and send it off if the council directs and approves this recommendation.
So I make a move, I move that we approve item number two on the consent calendar?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Oh, Deirdre's back.
My connection dropped a bit. The motion was made by?
Michael O'Neil, seconded by Vatalas.
Thank you. Council and for item number two, Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes.
Councilmember Beer.
Yes.
Councilmember Vatalas.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
And item number two passes with a vote of five to zero.
Great, thank you very much. Pardon my technical difficulties, my, talk my IT department.
I do want to say that I, Kevin Mullen was the speaker at the Democrats meeting and I did talk to him about trying to push it along within the state also and help push Jackie and everybody else so that we could get this going.
Yeah, I was going to make a comment about that. I recall that he said he would be looking into whether the CPUC could bear, there might be something to bear on this issue from the state level. So I think that's really important.
Great, thanks. Thank you. All right, so we will move on and to our public hearing. And we are considering, consideration of appeal of the planning commission's approval with conditions of use permit UP 102-18 for the installation of a new Verizon wireless communication facility, including a canister mounted on an extended extension top, on top of an existing utility pole and associated pole-mounted equipment in the Redwood Way Public Rideaway approximately 120 feet northeast of the intersection of Redwood Way and the Readaway in vicinity of 1307 Redwood Way and consideration of an alternate project location for the Verizon WCF, which would include a canister antenna mounted directly on top of a replacement utility pole and associated ground-mounted equipment, including but not limited to a radio cabinet and battery backup system in the Laredo Way Public Rideaway approximately 760 feet northwest of the intersection of Terranova Boulevard and Laredo Way in the vicinity of 1334 Laredo Way in Pacifica and finding the project exempt from California Environmental Law Act. So I think we will have a presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Martin and council members. I am Associate Planner Bonnie O'Connor. The item before you is consideration of an appeal on the planning commission's approval with conditions of use of a use permit for the construction of a small cell wireless communication facility on an existing utility pole in the public rideaway in the vicinity of 1307 Redwood Way. The application for this project was received in 2018 along with seven other similar Verizon small cell wireless facility projects proposed throughout Pacifica. One of these applications was the facility near 1450 Terranova Boulevard and was approved by city council on appeal on July 13th, 2020. The six remaining applications were withdrawn by Verizon and are no longer pending with the city. Slide. The council's consideration of this item is being heard this evening as a result of a number of actions that occurred since the planning commission's approval of the use permit on June 15th, 2020. The hearing has been rescheduled a number of times with agreement of the applicant and the appellant to allow for a community meeting to occur and exploration of alternative site locations. Slide. The city reviewed the wireless communication facility or WCF at 1307 Redwood Way in accordance with a complex local, state, and federal regulatory framework. Major regulatory considerations included Article 26 of the city zoning regulations, which includes general standards for all WCFs, standards specific to WCFs in the rideaway and additional use permit findings. California Public Utilities Code Section 7901 and 7901.1, which effectively limits a local government's ability to regulate a proposal in the public right-of-way to ensure the proposal does not incommode the public's use of the right-of-way and to ensure that the design of the facility is applicable to all entities in an equivalent manner. And Congress's enactment of the Telecommunications Act of 1996 and regulations of the Federal Communication Commission, or FCC, relating to WCFs place limitations on regulations of radio frequency emissions, effective prohibitions of WCFs, discriminations of WCFs, and timing for review of WCF applications. The appellant to this project has listed six bases for his appeal. Additionally, the appellant provided additional points in subsequent emails to the city. City staff and consultant with the city's attorney office has reviewed the appellant's claims. The appellant claims relate to the need for the applicant to establish a necessity for the WCF, the facility's inconsistency with the Pacifica Municipal Code, the potential for future modification of the facility, the lack of applicable regulations that would require approval or prohibit denial of the facility, and the city's response to public records requests relating to recent Verizon WCF applications. Staff's response to each of these claims as well as subsequent points provided are supported by staff's findings of the project as conditionally approved, complied with applicable regulations of the Pacifica Municipal Code, and by the city attorney's review and understanding of applicable WCF regulations and interpretation of those regulations through issued orders and rulings. Therefore, all the reasons provided in the staff report, staff recommends the council deny the appeal of the use permit. Slide. As previously noted, the appeal hearing was rescheduled to allow Verizon to explore site alternatives in response to a number of comments received from the public on the Redwood Way location. Public concerns with the Redwood Way location included proximity of Redwood Way, of the Redwood Way location to various residences, the lack of battery backup to the antenna to provide service during a power outage, and structural concerns with the pole extension on the existing utility pole. Verizon expanded their alternative site analysis to include consideration of five additional utility pole sites in the public rideaway along Laredo Way and proposed that the existing utility pole located in the vicinity of 1334 Laredo Way, which is labeled as alternative candidate 10 in the revised alternative site analysis, would be a feasible alternative for a modified WCF design to address some of the public's feedback on the Redwood Way location. Slide. Verizon proposes to have PG&E replace the existing 38 and a half foot pole with a replacement pole that is 46 and a half feet. Atop the wood pole, Verizon proposes to install a mounting bracket and a two-foot, 4.7 inch tall and one-foot diameter cylindrical antenna. A two-foot, five-inch antenna canister would cover the antenna. The resulting height of the new pole and antenna would be 50 feet four inches. While evaluating this alternative, the city found that the proposed two-foot, 4.7 inch tall antenna did not comply with the two-foot height dimension standard of Pacifica Municipal Code Section 9-4.2608E, subsection E1. With assistance from the city's radio engineer consultant, comparable alternative cylindrical antennas for the Laredo Way location, which would meet the city's standards, were identified. Staff has proposed a condition of approval which would require the applicant to revise the antenna of the proposed Laredo Way location to include an antenna model that meets the above standards along with other applicable WCF standards, as well as not to exceed beyond the proposed overall height of 50 feet four inches. The applicant has expressed to staff that it would be able to incorporate a revised antenna model as condition and has already identified an alternative antenna model. Additionally, the applicant has since provided, has provided a radio frequency report and local interference report, each prepared and signed by a qualified professional, that concluded the alternative antenna model would not conflict with the FCC's radio frequency standards or create any local interference issues. The Laredo Way location design includes a ground-mounted utility cabinet approximately nine feet southeast from the pole site. The four-and-a-half-foot high, four-foot wide, and one-foot, 10-inch deep utility cabinet. The four and a half foot high, four foot wide, and one foot, 10 inch deep utility cabinet would house, would house two dual-band remote radio units, four cooling fans, a battery backup cabinet, a heat exchanger, and a meter would project from the cabinet. Additionally, underground grounding rods would be installed on either side of the utility cabinet. Slide. The Reedaway location has several advantages over the Redwood Way location, including, but not limited to, the following six characteristics summarized below. The complete pole replacement would ensure that the WCF support structure complies with all currently applicable safety standards for structural integrity. Replacement pole would allow for a direct method of attachment to the top of the pole, which would result in a sleeker appearance that better aligns with the pole diameter as compared to the bayonet-style attachment proposed for the Redwood Way location. Though the Reedaway location is not fronted by single-family residences to the southeast of the site, which would allow for the installation of the ground-mounted equipment instead of the pole-mounted equipment, resulting in a sleeker visual appearance, appearance when considering the pole itself. The battery backup does not, does include cooling equipment that would generate noise. And as detailed, I'm sorry, the use of ground-mounted equipment would enable installation of a battery backup system that wouldn't, that would enable operation of the WCF for a period of time during power outages. This battery backup does include cooling equipment that would generate noise. As detailed in the staff report, maximum noise generated would comply with the draft general plan noise limitations, and would only be expected when higher temperatures are experienced. Slide. The fifth advantage would be, there are fewer residences that are located in the vicinity of Reedaway location. Slide. And the sixth advantage being the use of the ground-mounted equipment allows for installation of lower-frequency radios alongside a higher-frequency radio to provide for an increased signal range and in-building signal strength from the WCF without additional visual clutter on the pole. And the higher-frequency or mid-band signal works in a shorter range, has lower building penetration, but provides higher data speeds and capacity versus the lower-band signal, which was not included in the Redwood Way location, and provides longer-range signal, better building penetration, but provides lower speeds and capacity. As fully detailed in the staff report, the Reedaway location has been evaluated under the applicable sections of the Pacifica Municipal Code, particularly the aesthetic standards of the code, which require containment, concealment, and minimization of visibility. Staff has reviewed the submitted materials for Reedaway location and has determined that the Reedaway location, as conditioned, would meet the applicable requirements of the municipal code, and has provided the findings necessary to support approval of the use permit as modified by the Reedaway location, and to find the project exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Public comments received since the publication of the staff report and as of, as of 5:00 PM today were compiled and provided to the city council prior to the hearing and are posted online for public view. In addition to city staff, including the city attorney office, the city's radio engineer consultant, Mike Offerbach of CTC Technology and Energy, is present to help answer any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Bonnie. Okay, any council members have questions before we offer it up to the appellant?
Mayor Martin?
Yeah.
I'm not sure if you asked this at the beginning, but ex parte communications should be addressed at some point?
Yes, okay, that's, now's a good time. Anyone have any ex parte communications they need to talk about?
Not since the last meeting that we had on this item.
Yeah, I've had no communications with any party since the last meeting that I disclosed there, except emails from the app, the appellant did send an email.
I had the same, as Mr. O'Neal received email from the appellant.
Yeah, only received an email.
I've had emails and verbal communications with some of the neighbors and surrounding neighborhood. Okay, if no one has any questions for staff, then I will invite the, the appellant to speak for up to 10 minutes, and I believe that is Dr. Sunil Bot. And I would offer, if you'd like to reserve three minutes, up to three minutes, for a rebuttal, Dr. Bot? You can choose to use all 10 minutes now or reserve some time.
I will take eight minutes now and reserve two minutes for rebuttal.
Okay, great. Do you have a presentation?
I do, Ms. Coffey should have my slides.
Okay, great.
I, I will go ahead and pull up the slides and then just confirm with Deputy City Clerk Brooks when she is ready with the eight-minute timer. And Dr. Bot, would you, would you be okay with a one-minute time check?
I got a timer here, so I, I think I'm okay.
Okay.
Mayor Martin, Councilmembers Elizabeth Brooks, Deputy City Clerk, joining by audio this evening. I have eight minutes on the clock and I'm ready to go whenever Dr. Bot begins speaking.
Okay, we can see the presentation? Great. Okay, we're good.
Okay, honorable members of the city council, I am a homeowner in Park Pacifica, father and dual-boarded certified, dual-board certified physician with a bachelor degree, bachelor's degree in bioengineering. I work at the Urgent Care in Daly City, maintain neuromuscular practices in San Mateo and at Time Health in Rockaway Beach. I commend your support for HR 530 and truly appreciate you sponsoring an update to the wireless ordinance. However, due to the urgency of this issue, it is still crucial that you uphold this appeal and deny the application as currently proposed. Next slide, please. RF emissions are irrelevant to this application. I ask that you listen to your constituents, but do not discuss RF emissions tonight to avoid violating federal law. Next slide, please. This installation does not comply with Pacifica's written aesthetic standard, which is clear grounds for denial under federal and state law. All six legal claims by the applicant are unfounded. The threat of litigation is empty. I have provided this information to you in detail in advance, published in Attachment F. If you do approve this antenna on Reedaway, you will set a very dangerous precedent for WCFs within 50 feet of a private residence. Any application that comes in prior to an update of our wireless ordinances will have to be approved within the 60 to 90-day shot clocks. As you know, the city will not be able to start this ordinance update until spring, and update, ordinance updates take six months or longer, so we're looking at about a year. Next slide, please. This map was received through a public records request to the city and shows 22 proposed Verizon small cell sites throughout Pacifica. The eight sites on the right had applications submitted to the city in the first quarter of 2018, as Ms. O'Connor pointed out, and these were on the city's active planning map until they fell off Q2 of 2020. A minimum of six applications and likely more are ready to be submitted tomorrow, based on your decision today. Next slide, please, next slide, please. There's 14 sites in Northern Pacifica. Next slide. And eight sites in Southern Pacifica. Next slide. Tonight's draft resolution that is seeking all of your names, as well as the signatures of the mayor and the city attorney, state that this application is sequo exempt due to the city having no evidence the Verizon intends to expand its network to 22 small cells in the city of Pacifica. Next slide, please. This map obviously refutes that statement. Next slide. Federal law, which was passed through Congress in 1996, has never been changed by any of the FCC orders, and it preserves local zoning authority, except for three limitations. The applicant's letter tried to use these three limitations, but unsuccessfully applied, tried to apply them to this case. Next slide, please. These are the limitations. You have allowed local small cells from both AT&amp;T and Verizon, which demonstrates that there is no discrimination or inhibition of competition. The application does not cite any new or additional services that are being provided. There are no RF emissions claims being made. The hazards to property values come from certified local realtor statements that do not reference any RF concerns. Next slide, please. The draft resolution also seemingly suggests, in context on page three and eight, that the applicant's right to use, locate a WCF on the public right of way is absolute. Next slide, please. State law does not imply that Verizon has the right to use any equipment that they want on any pole in the city. This is confirmed by the applicant. This quote is directly out of Attachment H, page three, which is the applicant's letter, where they quote the April 2019 California Supreme Court ruling. This right to locate in the public right of way is subject to local regulation based on aesthetic considerations. That's your ability to like, regulate on the aesthetics of our city. Next slide, please. The Pacifica Municipal Code clearly establishes this aesthetic standard by stating, "All WCFs to the maximum extent practicable must achieve concealment and stealth of antennas, equipment, and support structures. Further, all WCFs to the fullest extent possible located to minimize visibility from surrounding areas and private or public rights of way." Next slide, please. Our currently approved facilities do comply with this aesthetic standard, confirming that it is not illegally discriminatory or prohibitive. The Valimar repeater system do not increase the height of the utility poles, thus they incorporate best practices to achieve much better concealment and stealth compared with a small cell. The two previously approved small cells at Ace Hardware in Terranova High School utilize poles that minimize visibility from surrounding areas and public rights of way, as they are in direct view of only zero and two residential homes respectively. Both of the Reedaway and the Redwood site are directly adjacent to homes, which would be in blatant view of greater than 20 homes. The Reedaway site is actually visible from our largest public right of way in the area, Terranova Boulevard, and can be seen from all those townhomes that sit across from Ortega School. Next slide, please. Regarding small cells and repeaters, on page nine of Attachment H, which is the applicant's letter, the applicant erroneously and quite disingenuously tries to mislead the council into believing that the city has previously approved 12 small cells in Valimar. Next slide, please. The Valimar WCFs are a repeater system, not small cells. This can be seen here as a small box in the middle of a pole with no increase in the height of the pole. Compare this with the almost 20% increase in pole height accompanying a small cell antenna. This is a significant aesthetic difference. For a telecom professional to confuse these in a legal argument is unethical. Since this is a document, as part of the record, we will be filing complaints with the California Bar Association, with all attorneys involved in this hearing. The Frontierland Tree macro site is shown here to demonstrate other technologies available to the applicant. We are not telling the applicant what equipment to use or where to put it. We are just requiring that they use appropriate equipment and location to comply with Pacifica's aesthetic code in order to be approved. Next slide, please. The alternate site analysis is also incomplete, as the aesthetic standard requires minimal visibility from surrounding area.
Eight minutes, Mayor and councilmembers?
Have one more minute, and I'll, I'll just save one for rebuttal.
Sure.
Okay. The alternate site is incomplete. The Pacifica Municipal Code requires proof that an alternate site with fewer visual impacts does not provide adequate signal coverage. None of the 15 sites submitted state that they have fewer visual impacts and signal coverage is not mentioned at all. Pacifica Municipal Code guidelines would support finding prow sites not visible from homes, or considering nearby sites not in the public way, public right of way, such as a nearby water tower off of Big Sur, which was suggested by Jackie Spears' office. Next slide, please.
That's time.
You can see that water tower that was suggested by Jackie Spears' office.
You still want your one minute, Sunil?
Yeah, let me, I have two more slides. Let me just, I'll, I'll run through them.
We'll just take it off, yeah.
Okay. So you can see that perfectly viable water tank off of Big Sur, direct line of sight from Reedaway. You can also see the previously approved small cell at Terranova High School. Previous slide, please. It is clear that a denial of a WCF at Reedaway is in no way prohibiting services and would rece, recently approved, but, that was recently approved and the viable alternative site. Next slide. This basically shows that if you approve a small cell within 50 feet of a home, this whole area has poor wireless coverage, and Verizon could put six more right next to homes, and you have just set the precedent to allow that to happen. Next slide. Last month, Mike Cohen found that 57% of District Four residents surveyed supported 500-foot setbacks for WCFs, while only 12% disagreed. Last slide, please. We are begging you, you must deny this application, pass an urgency ordinance with tonight's resolution restricting small cells to commercial zones like Mill Valley, or 500-foot residential setbacks like Paloma. At least allow future appeals fees to be waived for residents fighting them outside their homes, please, thank you.
Thank you, Sunil. Okay. So, do we have any questions for Dr. Sunil Bot?
I do.
Go ahead, Mary.
Good evening, Dr. Bot. Thank you so much for being here and thank you for your hard work. I really appreciate it. Um, can you, can you show the slide that talks about the FCC regulations? Because I wasn't quite clear on that, and maybe, is it okay to ask for it to be re-explained? Is that okay for me to do? Mayor?
Yes.
It was in the, towards the beginning of the.
Nine and 10. There you go. The, the previous one is the first part.
Yeah.
So, so there's Chapter 47 of the code, Section 332, there's Part A and Part B. So Part A basically says that a local zoning authority is preserved. Nothing in this chapter shall limit the authority of the state or local government or insurability thereof over decisions regarding placement, construction, and modification of these wireless services. There are four things that the, the federal government restricts or, or limits, and those are on the next page. So the, the three things that the local government cannot do is not discriminate against providers or, or services, and not effectively prohibit. There's a definition, I, I presented all this in my previous appeal, and that is actually on the record. The definition of prohibition of services is preventing a wireless provider from providing new services or providing additional services. These, these antennas that are being proposed do not do either of those. And, and you've obviously just approved an antenna 1,500 feet away at Terranova High School. And then obviously, you know, the, the big thing is. And then, obviously, you know, the big thing is we can't, the city cannot regulate based on RF emissions, which we are not asking you to do. The fourth point of that is that you have to give your denial in writing. All this information was also submitted in our memorandum from the attorney that we submitted for this and the previous appeal.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, council member here.
Anyone else have any questions?
I was wondering if the city attorney could make a comment on those two slides?
Do you want me to make the comment now or during, after the question comments? And then the applicants have commented. So in other words, I can, I can address that now or in, you know, at the start of deliberations? Because these questions may be answered by the applicant's attorney.
I was just thinking in terms of, we just saw the slide, it's kind of fresh. So maybe if you can do it now?
Okay. So could we put the first slide back up, please? So on this particular portion of the federal regulations, this is the, this, it does indicate the language of the statute itself. But I would say that Section B is omitted, subsection B is omitted. And that section provides that, that there, that a local regulation can be preempted if it is an effective prohibition of service. So that's an important portion of the statute, which needs to be taken into consideration. It's never advised to read a particular section of a statute in isolation. You have to read it in the context of all of those other subsections that surround the statute. So I would say that this section is accurate, but you also have to take into consideration subsection B of that same statute, which basically indicates that local jurisdictions cannot effectively prohibit wireless carriers from enacting, you know, improving their systems. And then, I can't remember what the second slide was.
The second slide is summary, a summary of subsection B, and that's also included in packet page 293, word for word, if you wanted to look at that. But this is just a summary of that, since I've already presented that in a previous appeal.
Right, and so I would just reiterate that there is, you know, federal regulations indicate that you cannot effectively prohibit a wireless carrier from, from improving their systems. And the, you know, Dr. Bhatt indicates that there's no discrimination. The fact that the city has approved wireless facilities in other areas does not negate the city's obligation to, to, to apply federal regulations to this application. So in other words, if the city is applying regulations that effectively prohibit the wireless carrier from improving its system, then the city would be in violation of federal law, even if the city has approved wireless facilities in other locations. And I will say that the, the Federal Communications Committee recently issued a declaratory ruling related to small wireless facilities. And that declaratory ruling has interpreted the Telecommunications Act to mean that effective prohibition means materially inhibiting the carrier from improving or densifying its networks. So there, there is some recent law which interprets the Telecommunications Act and what an effective prohibition means. And that's, that's all included in the staff report as well.
On packet page 293, it shows that the FCC has three examples of effective prohibition, which are inability to provide new services, inability to provide additional services, and giving advantage to one service over the other. These are all passed by Congress and never been changed. FCC orders are currently being challenged in the Supreme Court by many municipalities. Those three definitions of effective prohibition are not in any way construed by a denial of this application because it's a 4G antenna, and it's not providing any new or additional services.
So Mayor Martin, I, the appellate's time is up. So I think we should focus back on the public hearing process, which now requires us to hear from the applicant.
Yes.
And I'd be happy to answer any other questions council has during deliberations.
Sounds good. So no council member has any more questions for Dr. Bhatt? Nope, okay. All right, so we will go ahead and invite the applicant to speak. I think we have Christine here. We have Christine, and it's here on the list, yeah. Quick copy.
One moment while we transition the applicant. Okay, and I will bring up the applicant's slides. Once we establish how, how much time the applicant wishes to have now, you may have up to 10 minutes and reserve up, you may reserve up to three of those 10 minutes for rebuttal.
We'd like to reserve three minutes for rebuttal, please.
Okay.
And if you could give us a one-minute warning, that would be really helpful.
Mayor Martin, I have seven minutes on the timer, and when the applicant begins speaking, I'm ready to start.
Okay, I will bring up the presentation.
If you can, go ahead and skip down to slide three.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry, the previous slide with the photograph of the ocean? Perfect, thank you.
Okay, zero, set.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Martin, Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer, council members and staff. I am Maureen Cruzen with Verizon Wireless. Joining me this evening are Joanna Wang from Modus and our outside counsel, Paul Albritton, who will take his three minutes on rebuttal, as we said, as well as Verizon's RF design engineer for Pacifica, Melvin Bakay, who has more than 20 years of experience designing wireless networks and selecting antenna locations. Also with us is Bill Hammett from Hammond Edison, an independent engineering consulting firm, which completed studies for both RF emissions and noise for this project. Verizon, Modus, and city staff have been working together on this project for a long time. The city has conducted a rigorous review, and together, we've come to a solution that provides the needed service while also considering aesthetics and location. Over the last several months, Verizon has gone the extra mile with community outreach. We created the website you see here, from which we received 85 messages of support and seven in opposition. We held an educational webinar at the end of July consisting of about 50 minutes of presentations on wireless networks, the proposed small cell on Redwood Way, and RF emissions, followed by an hour-long question-and-answer session. And we conducted a text campaign, which garnered more than 400 text messages of support and 53 opposed. We did these things because Verizon Wireless wants to be a community partner with the City of Pacifica. We have long shown our commitment to providing the best wireless service, and I will now hand it off to Joanna, who will illustrate that commitment through a discussion of the timeline and the project details.
Thank you, Maureen. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Next, next slide. Thank you. Okay, so in front of you is the chronology of the project. Verizon Wireless has been working on this project for over four years. It was initially kicked off in 2016 when Modus and Verizon began their due diligence. We've completed field analysis and engineering since that time. The applications were filed more than two and a half years ago in early 2018 as part of a larger batch of eight small cells in Pacifica, which Dr. Bhatt referenced earlier. Since that time, Verizon has canceled six of those eight projects, leaving Pacifica for the Terranova High School site that was approved by the Planning Commission and the City Council earlier this year, and the site and project in front of you tonight. This project was approved by the Planning Commission in June and then subsequently appealed. The City Council meeting was scheduled for September 14th after Verizon's educational outreach, but was continued at the request of city staff so that staff and Verizon could reevaluate alternatives and any out-of-the-box solutions. Subsequently, because staff was open to evaluating a different design that included a ground cabinet, the Larita Way alternative was identified as a viable alternative. Next slide, please. This is a 3D aerial photo of the geographic area Verizon is looking to serve. The area is in a valley serviced by existing macro facilities on the east and west side of the hills. Based on this image, it's very easy to see why it's extremely difficult to provide service to the Terranova Corridor as the existing sites are blocked by the ridges of the valley. It will help to remember this topography challenge as we discuss the coverage maps later in the presentation. The yellow pins on this screen identify the locations of the two proposed small cell projects that together will help improve service to this area. Next slide. This is a photo simulation of the proposed small cell facility along Redwood Way. It includes a two-foot antenna atop an existing wooden utility pole, and the radio equipment, smart meter, and disconnect would all be placed lower on the pole. Next slide. As part of the due diligence, we looked at a total of 15 possible solutions for this area, 14 of which were ruled out for non-compliance with state engineering regulations and PG&E standards, leaving the proposed location along Redwood Way as the only viable solution. However, after the June appeal and Verizon's community outreach conducted through August and September, at the request of city staff, the search area was re-combed to see if there was any way to make any of the alternatives work. The result of that effort is that alternative 10, the Larita Way alternative, which was previously disqualified for lack of working space and compliance with PG&E requirements, is now feasible because of staff's new willingness and consideration of a redesign of the facility that would include a ground cabinet. Since this solution was identified, we've been working collaboratively with the city to develop the Larita Way alternative, complete the engineering, and prepare and compile new submitted materials in time for tonight's meeting. Next slide, please. Here you can see a photo simulation of the Larita Way alternative looking south at the site from Larita Way. It includes a 28-inch antenna atop a replacement wooden utility pole. This alternative previously didn't work due to the lack of mandatory clearance space for safe access between the fence on the left side of the pole and the driveway on the right. However, with staff's willingness to accommodate a ground cabinet, safe access is no longer an issue. The design now includes a radio equipment, smart meter, and disconnect, all placed in a nearby ground cabinet approximately nine feet away from the base of the pole. The ground cabinet design also allows us to address one of the issues raised by the appellate, which is backup batteries, which will allow Verizon Wireless to maintain service in the event of a power outage.
There's one minute remaining on the clock?
The benefit of this location is that it's adjacent to only one residence and a bunch of vacant field near the rear of, near the rear of the school baseball field. Next slide, please. This is an additional photo simulation of the site looking west from Larita Way. Next slide, please. Since our submission on November 6th, in collaboration with staff, a smaller antenna was identified in a right, and Verizon has agreed to a modification to the design to change the antenna model from a comscope antenna to an amphino model that is four inches shorter in height, that will help reduce the overall height of the facility. However, due to the expedited timeline for engineering on this alternative, the antenna model change was not able to make it into the final staff report and council packet for tonight. However, Hammond Edison did complete EME calculations on both of the antenna models. And as you can see here, the reduction in height of the antenna model also resulted in a reduction in the exposure limit.
That's time.
Do you want to keep going, or are you finished? Otherwise, you just take it off your, the end of your?
Yeah, I, I mean, maybe I can take an extra two minutes to cover. I think I need additional two minutes. That's okay.
Then you won't get a rebuttal, just so you know.
I thought I reserved three minutes for rebuttal?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah. Okay, so if we can go to the next slide, please. Before, this is a map of this, before and after coverage, side by side, that you can see. The map on the left shows the coverage gap that we're trying to service. The map on the right indicates, based off of the two small cell facilities, you can see an improvement in both in-building and in-vehicle coverage, which is the goal of the, goal of these projects. Next slide, please. Appellant raised an alternative at a nearby water tank property along Big Sur Way. Shown above, property is surrounded by the, to the west by a grove of eucalyptus trees that would obstruct the signal from reaching the coverage gap in the valley below. Facility here is more intrusive than any of the proposal we've proposed to the city. Make the site work, we'd have to remove the trees, which is not only more environmentally intrusive, it would create substantial visual impacts as the water tank where the site's located would become exposed. Currently, the tank is not visible from the main roadway. Additionally, placing a location here at the top of the valley simply wouldn't provide the necessary service compared to the bottom of the valley. It won't provide the network coverage we need, and it's an inefficient network design, which is indicative of all of the hillside locations that the appellate proposed. If you look at the next slide, you can see that our engineers ran a coverage analysis to compare to the service, and you can see, next slide, please. Based off of the locations there, circled in black, that those locations with the water tank facility would still have coverage gaps. If you look at this facility or this map, which shows the areas of service from the Larita Way alternative, those deficient areas would be properly covered by the small cell proposed along Larita Way. Next slide, please. Based off this, based off this information provided to you, you know, in conclusion, Verizon Wireless has proposed two workable solutions that would provide better and adequate coverage than anything the appellate has proposed. These are the least intrusive means. We respectfully request that you deny the appeal and approve one of these two locations for you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, does anyone have any questions for the applicant?
I do. Oh, go ahead, Speaker Beckmeyer, go ahead.
I do have a couple, hi, thanks. I do have a couple of questions about the pole location, and it's going to be a new pole that's being proposed, installing a new pole. And I understand that the equipment isn't going to be on the pole, but it's in the camp. But what I'm concerned about is damage or impact on the homeowner where that fence is coming, the little, the low fence is coming down. How do you install a pole without tearing up their yard? Or what, you know, what are the procedures around that? I didn't see anything in the staff report specific about that. And so I'm trying to understand, I mean, in, in your information.
Yeah, I'm happy to provide that. In the plan sets that we included, there's a note there that says "Part of the fence will need to be replaced as we replace the pole." The part, the portion of the fence that would need to be replaced is all in the public right-of-way. So we would only replace what's necessary. And it's on page A1 of the plan set under enlarged site plan. Existing fence to be removed as necessary for condo. Existing fence to be removed as necessary for conduit entrenching. There's about three feet and one inch from the back of the pole to the public right of way in the property line. So give or take, we would have about three feet if we needed to remove of that fence. That said, I don't think we would need that much because the power, the trenching, the fiber and power run would not be three feet wide.
Okay. And then are there guide wires or any of that kind of supportive structure that would be different than is currently there?
It wouldn't be different. It would be replaced, but it would be in the exact same spot. Those guy wires are the reason why it's a pole replacement and not simply a pole top extension through a bayonet.
Okay, and one more question. I think I have the answer because I think as I was going through the alternatives that you provided, there is a pole further down the street going downhill that isn't right next to a house, but it looks like there, that, I know that one wasn't chosen. Is that because there's a transformer on that pole?
Are you able to identify the pole maybe by number? If you're able to pull up the map, I can see. Yeah, I'm happy to go over it as well. I'm also at the end of the presentation deck. There is an appendix that goes through all of the different candidates and the specific reasons why they were ruled out. So we can always pull and reference that, that slide that will show specifically what the issues were.
Okay.
Yeah, that was going to be my question too, was to get specific details about 11, 12, and 13 and why they were not chosen.
Oh, great. Mary has the numbers. Wonderful.
Perfect. Okay, so Ms. Coffey, if you're able to go to the appendix of the slide deck, it would be page 29, 30, 31.
Is it, uh, site 11? Is that what you want to see?
I think between Councilmember Beckmeyer and Councilmember Beer, they want to see slide 11 through 13. So we can just start from here. Right? Okay, so slide 11, if you, candidate 11, I apologize. Yes. The reason that site was rolled out is because there is a transformer there, which is in violation of PG&E standards. Small cell facilities are not allowed to be located on PG&E poles that also have transformers. So, and then the next slide, candidate 12 also has existing PG&E equipment that would not be allowed under the current standards. They include cutouts, which are circled there at the top. So PG&E ruled that out. And then with regard to alternative candidate 13, which is the next slide, this, this pole lacks requisite quadrant space to maintain GO95 climbing space that's required. If you look closely, there's gray or silver conduits at the front of the pole. So those two quadrants are not feasible to place the facility or the, the radio equipment. And then on the back of the pole, there wouldn't be enough climbing space in addition to placing the pole, the pole-mounted equipment.
I see. Thank you.
And so, but you're, you're going to replace pole number 10, right?
Pole 10? Uh, yes.
So would, would it be possible to replace pole 13 and have the additional space and things that you need?
I don't believe so, mostly because those are not our conduits to be moving around. They've reserved that, those locations on, in those quadrants.
For PG&E, correct?
I'm sorry?
For PG&E, is that correct?
Right. I'm not exactly sure what's in those quadrants. However, looking at it, that photo, it looks like it's potentially communication lines. If you look at that, at the top of that gray, is there a way I can do an annotation? So I can draw on this, but at the top of the conduits, you can see a black communication line that has fiber, a fiber box there. And it looks like that fiber leads into the conduit and goes into the ground. Those are more than likely AT&amp;T's fiber lines.
Okay.
So not PG&Es.
Suvaroff?
My question is about the pole. Since you're putting in a new pole, and it would appear that you have to get an easement for the ground-mounted box, can you move the pole a little bit further away from the property, like on the other side of the fence?
We did look into this and evaluate it. I think that it is feasible to move the pole location, provided PG&E approves of us doing so, to the opposite side of the fence. I don't believe that an easement is required for the ground cabinet since it is in the public right of way. One of the limitations, I would say, about moving the pole is, and the distance with, with which we can move that pole is the amount of slack in the existing lines for the primary and secondary power lines. So we would just have to make sure that moving the pole to the other side of the fence would evenly, wouldn't impact the slack or the tension in those lines, but also wouldn't, so wouldn't impact the tension in those lines. And also, the poles themselves have to be evenly, fairly evenly distributed to withstand the weight. I do think that potentially moving it outside of the fenced area in between the location of the current fence and the cabinet is feasible, provided PG&E approves of the final engineering.
You're on mute.
Since they have to redo the wires anyway, when you put up a new pole, it would seem like that could be feasible.
Yeah, you know, I, I think that that's something that we could evaluate and propose through PG&E. And I, based off our initial analysis, I don't see an issue with that.
Okay, let's talk about that with, with our planner once we deliberate to see what, that would have to come back to, to planning. Anyone else have any questions for Joanna? So Verizon, do you, you don't offer bandwidth to any other providers, is that right? It's only to Verizon customers?
That's correct. However, any customer, whether you are on the Verizon network, if you are making an emergency call, can make an emergency call off of any cell, nearby cell facility.
Okay. Okay. I think all my other questions were answered already. Okay, so seeing no further questions from council, I will open the public hearing to receive public testimony. Let me see who we've got here. Now would be the time that you'd want to raise your hand, if you're here from the public, to speak on this item. I repeat, if you are here to speak, please raise your hand now using the raised hand function on Zoom, or if you're on your phone, hit star nine.
Mayor, should we, are we going to allow three minutes or two minutes?
I'm waiting to see. We've got about 38 attendees. Let's get those hands raised, folks. What, we're going to limit your time to two minutes most likely, given the hand raising. Do I have a head nod to everyone? Yeah, okay. All right, good. So raise your hands if you want to talk. You'll get two minutes to speak. And say your name, your first name and your last name when you begin, and Elizabeth will keep time. We'll hand it over to Elizabeth.
Thank you, Mayor Martin. Elizabeth Brooks, Deputy City Clerk. Our first speaker will be Erin Pickett, followed by Colin with the last four digits, 1541. Erin, you're our first speaker.
Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you for your time tonight. I just really wanted to emphasize how much I support Dr. Bott's presentation. Aesthetically, these towers do not belong in our town. And I think it is egregious that they're trying to put them on street corners, feet from people's windows. They, they look terrible, number one, and I support at least having them 500 feet from where anybody can see them. And this is a real issue. And as Dr. Bott said, if this continues to be allowed, it's going to set a precedent. These towers will continue to be to put up all over our city, and that just creates a lot of whole other problems. So that is what I wanted to say tonight, and I support his presentation and his knowledge and his background. And I hope that this tower can be denied, this application can be denied. These towers have no part in our town. Thank you so much.
Thank you. User 1541, please state your name for the record. You're our next speaker.
Hi there. Hi there. Um, my name is Lena Koenig, and I live at 1307 Redwood Way with my family of four. First, I'd like to thank all of our council members for all of the time and energy that they've put into this situation. I know this has been difficult. And I'd also like to take this opportunity, since fellow neighbors are listening, to thank you, the community, who responded to our letters by engaging the community. We've really been humbled by the hundreds of you who immediately reached out to help us. And I know most of you know us by now. For those of you who aren't familiar, we moved here just three years ago. We built a nursery in this home, and we had a son. Then out of nowhere, we received a notice from Verizon, and they were planning on building a small cell tower right side of, right outside of my son's window, only about 17 feet from his crib. You can imagine how shocked we were actually when the majority of the planning commission immediately approved the facility without any concern to our family, or that matter, any of the neighbors who would also immediately affect. So what we did is we did what any family would do to protect their home. We went out to the community to ask for help. And in the middle of this crazy pandemic, when California was on fire over the summer, making the air quality almost unbreathable, we still went door to door to hand out letters and thousands of letters. We safely spoke to so many of our neighbors, everyone that we, we passed, everyone that would come out to speak to us, to told them about this situation. And what we realized was that we were part of a very clear majority. No one we spoke to would approve a cellular tower 17 feet from their children's windows, and no homeowner would approve this type of radio equipment to be installed on their property or at the end of anyone's driveways. And, you know, the more research we did on this issue, we just learned that Verizon is simply trying to force their equipment on residents' properties because it's the cheapest and easiest thing for them to do.
I'm sorry, you're at time.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from username Dympnau. Please state your name for the record. You'll be followed by Jason Rixson. Username D Y M P N A, you are our speaker. Please state your name for the record. Moving on to Jason Rixson, we'll come back to Dympnau later.
Hi, my name is Jason Rixson. My wife and I are homeowners at 1335 Loretta Way. I'm going to read just a few items from a letter I sent in to the council today. But first, I'd, I'd like to make a quick comment on the Verizon's rep, their note on pole 13, saying that, you know, they were unable to, or unable to mount pole-mounted equipment there. But what about ground equipment as they're proposing across the street from our house? Our residence is located almost directly across the street from the proposed small cell antenna and battery backup cabinet. While we do not categorically oppose cellular data infrastructure, we do feel this installation is an erroneous response to the appeal of the Redwood Way small cell site. We respectfully urge the City Council to uphold the existing appeal for Redwood Way and reconsider this alternate location proposal for the reasons listed below. It was helpful for us to review a neighboring community and their process of vetting small cell wireless improvements. These documents can be found via the link I provide below, although you can get it from a Google search. Palo Alto thoughtfully considered the effects of these improvements on its residents and made sure Verizon would not inflict the visual or auditory blight upon them. Battery backup. Capacity of the single device is measured in hours. I think it's four hours. So long-term power outage doesn't help us. Noise. Reviewing the Hamlet and Edison Noise Report dated 11/24/20, I see their executive summary states the installation will comply with the city limits. There are no backup documents or calculations to illustrate how they arrived at that conclusion. The proposed cabinet has five noise generating pieces of equipment, all in the neighborhood of 66 decibels each. Beyond any of their cellular RF issues, I'm very concerned with the potential for noise pollution on our very quiet street. The thought of having several conversation-level devices humming away just feet from our neighboring homes is deeply distressing. And I guess I'm out of time.
We'll go again to username D Y M P N A. Please state your name for the record. You'll be followed by username Linda. Some technical difficulties for Dympnau. We'll come back to you. Linda, please state your name for the record. You're our next speaker.
Linda Prasagni. So I would like to ask that council support the appeal and deny the application for this equipment at either of these sites we're discussing. Maureen, in the beginning of her discussion, said that there were support and opposition numbers that they collected from their Verizon site. I've been part of this process all the way along, and I remember that they sent, they sent an email or a communication to their subscribers saying, hey, would you like to have better cellphone service? Press here if yes. People pressed yes. That's how they got that information. There was no possibility to say no, even if you wanted to. We complained about it at the time. So I think it's much more accurate to use the, the Mike Cohen question that was just put out there objectively. You know, how, what do you think? Yes or no? And you get 56 nos to 12, I mean, 56 opposed to 12 supporting and 32 non-responders. I'm not sure how that happened, but I, I think that if that's the way that you collect your data and you present it, I have a problem with that, you know, coming right out of the gate. As far as putting these things near homes, they are really loud. Those fans can be really loud. That's noise pollution. And if you look at the before and after pictures of these locations, they have these sleek-looking towers and these neat little boxes. And then it's going to be added to, and it won't be sleek anymore, and it won't be pretty. They'll be real eyesores. And anywhere you go up and down Loretta, trying to relocate that antenna, you've got a school right there. You're getting closer to the main school buildings. You've got homes all along there. These things do not belong there. And with all the time they had with the extension of the appeal, they didn't try to find any, any locations that would match our descriptions of what Pacifica needs. They just tried to slide around the corner and skip within the area that they started with. So the city council really needs to step up and do that and protect us from this kind of intrusion and property value decimation. Please, please get an emergency ordinance and stop these small cells from coming into our neighborhoods.
Thank you.
Tonight. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Linda Jonas, who will be followed by Erin Macias. Please.
Hi, yes, Linda Jonas. My husband, Tom, and I have lived in this house at 1334 Loretta for 44 years. And the pole at the end of our driveway hasn't been a delight, but it hasn't been a nuisance. Now, if you come and put this stuff that could have things going on with people's health systems. could have things going on with people's health systems and so forth, it's not good. It's a driveway away from my ninety-six-and-a-half-year-old dad's bedroom, and you'd have to tear up my yard to put the new pole in. And I'm just not happy that I only learned about the possibility that this was being considered for my yard within the last two weeks. I was not notified way, way ahead and had any time to do any real big planning, other than speaking with a couple of neighbors. So I'm most unhappy. I do not want that pole put at the end of my driveway, irregardless of whether it's supposedly right away. You're going to wreck my yard. You're going to have an ugly eyesore for me to look out my front window at every morning. Please do not do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Erin Macias, followed by June Kafka.
Good evening, council and staff. This is Erin Macias of Lindemar. Oscar the Grouch's "I love trash cans" sitting on top of a utility pole is what comes to mind when I see the applicant's proposal. The desire to storm-proof Pacifica with undergrounding will never happen if these are added to poles, because it will dramatically increase the cost for the city to find alternatives to installed utilities. The ground cabinet is an attractive nuisance in this town. It is situated in an area with a history of both arson and vandalism. Most importantly, the current plan creates public blight. The open space and unobstructed views of the hills and ocean is what makes Pacifica a desirable place to live and invest. Yes, we all want improved cell service. This does not increase service for anybody other than paid Verizon subscribers. We, please pass an urgency ordinance requiring setbacks that mimic other cities like Mill Valley, who have similar natural environments like we do. The city should require any provider to meet aesthetic requirements to keep Pacifica scenic. Thank you.
Thank you.
June Kafka, followed by Heiko R. Please state your name for the record.
Yes, my name is June Francis Kafka, and I've lived at thirteen eleven Redwood Way for forty-eight years. I'm just up the hill from Lena and on the same side. I've had cancer two times before, Hodgkin's and breast cancer already, and I don't want the stress of worrying about whether I'm going to have more cancer at this point. Also, in the cell tower on Redwood Way, it would be within fifty feet of my kitchen window and also blocking my view. I strongly encourage the Pacifica City Council to adopt an ordinance that bans all small cell towers near residences, just like Petaluma, Mill Valley, Anselmo, San Ramon, and Ross did. It will help keep Pacifica beautiful and relieve any stressful situations and health concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Heiko R., followed by Michael Keeney.
Hello, my name is Heiko Bitter, and I reside at thirteen oh seven Redwood Way. Before I begin, I just want to say real fast that the pictures that are being used of my house are not accurate. The pole does not look, this surrounding area does not look like that anymore. The house is a completely different color. That picture is from two years ago, and there's been a lot of landscaping that has been done since. So I live here with my fiance and children. I want to share with you what it's been like the last six months. It's been grueling. I have a full-time job as a middle school science teacher in the public school system. I've had to restructure my entire curriculum to fit distance and hybrid learning. Full-time father to a sixteen-year-old stepdaughter and a one-year-old boy. And throughout all this, right, we still, I've still been going door to door to help inform Pacifica residents about Verizon's installation of wireless communication facilities in our community. Along with this hard work, also came loss, right? Lena, my fiance, lost her pregnancy. And after taking a break, we continued to press onward, and Lena and I passed out over two thousand letters to community members before our original September appeal date. This was in the midst of a pandemic, the height of the California fires with the AQI in the two and three hundreds, yet we're still to continue to try to inform our Pacifica neighbors of what Verizon was trying to do. So I urge the council tonight, right, to deny this application as written due to aesthetics reasons, which is allowable by law, and that goes for all of the proposed WCFs. And please enact an urgency ordinance to temporarily stop these WCFs from being erected on people's properties until Pacifica's ordinance has been updated. I really am thankful for the, for the council in working and giving up their time in this matter and working to try to find solutions and also the, writing the letter in support of H R five thirty and also updating your wireless ordinance next year. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Michael Keeney, you're our next speaker, followed by Gio Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Martin, and members of the council. My name is Michael Keeney, and I live at thirteen thirty-three Larita Way, across the street from the alternative location that is being considered. I provided a letter earlier today expressing my concerns regarding this alternate location, but would like to briefly summarize them and point out that the alternative location was proposed, as stated by the applicant, on November sixth. And the noise report is debated November twenty-fourth. I believe this location needs to be more thoroughly vetted if it is to actually be considered for approval. If an alternative location is proposed, it should be a new application. At the very least, if the council is interested in considering the proposed alternate location, its review and approval should be remanded to the planning commission for their review and approval. In addition to this concern, I'm also concerned about the noise generated by the proposed battery backup. The noise report provided by the applicant does not provide any of the technical data to support their conclusions. And I think that that information is necessary to adequately conclude that it complies with the general plan. So I respectfully request that if the council wishes to consider the Larita alternative, that they continue this item to allow the applicant to provide this additional data to show that they are in compliance with the general plan and thoroughly vet this alternate location. And if the council chooses to proceed, I would request that they include some conditions to provide additional noise abatement and/or mitigation to the mechanical systems that are associated with the, with the battery backup system and provide some monitoring and/or compliance for six or twelve months to show that the system's actually working and complying with the general plan. I think, thank you all for your consideration, and I would also support the applicant, the appellant's request to not proceed with the antenna installation on Redwood as well.
Yeah.
Next, we go to Gio Thompson, followed by Anita.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Maria Lenardi. I am calling to first say thank you so much to Dr. Bott for all of his hard work. I am super bummed that city council approved the small cell tower going up at my son's high school, at Terranova High School. I still cannot figure out how it's okay to install towers around children. That's super disturbing to me. And like Linda said earlier, I received a text from Verizon as well. I actually, it was not long after, excuse me, Lena and I had gone to pass out flyers that I received that text, and there was no option to say no if we didn't agree with what the text said. It just had the yes option. So I thought that that was really not cool and definitely made me feel not good about the whole situation, even more so than I already did. And, and I'm so glad to hear Mrs. Jonas. Hello, I'm happy to hear that you are calling in, and I did want to reach out to you because I do think that anybody will feel differently. I would love for city council to just reflect on how you would feel if these towers were to go in front of your house. I mean, that's really realistically what's going to happen. Once Verizon gets the green light, they're going to be everywhere. I grew up in Pacifica. I have raised my sons here. This is a very beautiful and sacred space. And, you know, I'm just concerned with, with not only how it's going to look and property values, but wildlife, all of our lives. So anyways, please really consider this, because this is, this is a big thing, and it can be prevented. So thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Anita, followed by Jamie Constantinos. Constantinos, Anita, please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Anita, and I would like to make a quick comment. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The statements of beautiful Pacifica's residents are really so powerful. The real concerns of residents as they plead for the maintenance of the beauty, the maintenance of the healthy environment, and most importantly, the maintenance of their sanity at this very difficult and stressful time for everyone is really moving. What exactly is the urgency to do this at this stressful time? There is precedent for communities around us who have dealt with this in a methodical and thoughtful manner. For example, the city of Palo Alto, less than a year ago, on Monday, December sixteenth, twenty nineteen, took its most dramatic action to date to curtail the proliferation of wireless antennas on street poles when the city council agreed to restrict such equipment in residential neighborhoods. The new rules in Palo Alto aim to alleviate the anxieties of the residents who have been arguing for years that telecommunications equipment cause health, aesthetic, and noise impacts. They aim to steer the equipment away from residential zones and towards commercial ones, and this is the right approach. They also attempted to strike a delicate balance, addressing the anxieties of residents, without inviting lawsuits from telecommunications companies. So we can certainly look at that, for example. I was also extremely disappointed by the approval of a tower to go on the grounds of our high school earlier this year, where we house our most precious family members for six to eight hours a day. If these pleas from residents don't move us, and if we know that this has been addressed thoughtfully by our neighbors, I don't know what else will do it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Jamie Constantinos, you're our next speaker, followed by another attempt from D Y M P N A.
Hi, good evening. This is Jamie Constantinos, and I just wanted to state publicly on the record that I too am not in favor of these wireless devices to go and to be placed in our communities. For all the reasons stated by everyone that has spoken before me, I'm not going to say anything new, but I applaud Dr. Bott on his work and every other heartfelt message. I echo it as well. And I'm saddened also to think that, that there was something put up by the high school. So I just want to state on the record that I strongly urge that we decline this technology for the variety of reasons stated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
D Y M P N A, our next speaker, followed by Audrey Keenig.
Hello.
Hello. Yes, I can hear you.
Oh, good. Okay, sorry about the glitches previously. Okay, my husband and my two kids moved here in two thousand thirteen because it was such a fantastic area, natural and beautiful and undestroyed. And the thoughts of Pacifica Council even acknowledging what Verizon wanted to do with their lovely town was just outrageous. I live across the road from Lena and Heiko, and I also have two kids, and the rays from that pole would have been coming in their bedroom windows, too. And even the new site is no better, because I can see it from my deck, and it's a visual disaster. What I found very confusing was the Verizon rep was asked at the beginning of this procedure, why didn't we choose a site down by Otega? And she said, well, obviously, because it's a school and there's children involved. Now, what does that say to you? Verizon have been very sneaky in their, in their direction about telling people what was going on. There's a pandemic going on. That's what's going on, and that's the real, real stuff. And they tried to sneak this Verizon pole in the back door, like they did with our neighbors on the freeway. And I think they have so much money, because I used to be a member with Verizon and not anymore, so they've got a lot more money going on there. And they could easily build the pathway up a mountain and place that pole up high and away from all our homes. And it's a visual disaster, and it takes away our property value, and it ruins Pacifica. So thank you, and I hope you reconsider your decision and get rid of all those poles out of our decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Audrey Keenig.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Audrey Keenig. I'm sixteen. I live at thirteen oh seven Redwood Way, where Verizon is proposing to build their small cell tower. To be clear, the location that is proposed is seventeen feet away from my one-year-old brother's nursery and my bedroom. This just really isn't okay. My family has worked really hard to create this home for us, so to have Verizon roll in and force their equipment this close to our window is just simply wrong. It's extremely invasive to our lives, to our home. Also, you should note that the images that Verizon is showing with a mock-up design of the small cell is outdated by years. We have made many changes to our home, including improved landscaping with a wooden planter around the pole that would make it an adequate location for their equipment, according to required minimum standards. Regardless, these poles do not belong on our homes, on our property, especially seventeen feet away from my baby brother's window and my window as well. So please approve the appeal and do not allow Verizon to destroy this town, this city, and our homes. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else want to speak on this item? Raise your hand now. Okay, we got another hand?
Go now to Bill Source. Please state your name for the record. Bill Source.
He muted himself when he called us your name.
There's another hand raising. We can.
We'll try with James Galerani and come back to Bill in a moment. Please state your name for the record.
This is Wendy Galerani at twelve thirty-six Redwood Way. I'm up the street from the alternative site that's being proposed, and it is the most invasive, ugly, alternative proposal that I've seen yet. You have two huge metal boxes at the end of Larita Way outside of the playground of Otega Elementary School, and now you want to put another metal box up the hill. I can see all three metal boxes from my window. Alternatively, the original plan for that cell tower on Redwood Way was ridiculous, and I'm glad that that appeal is being discussed as well. I absolutely oppose the alternative, the original. I implore you to deny this application. Thank you.
Bill Source, you're our next speaker.
Hi, try it this time. I'm a thirty-three-year resident of Pacifica and really enjoyed quality of life here. And the quality of life is not just aesthetically, but also, but also community-wise. I'm, I'm kind of concerned about what all these poles are going to do to my beautiful town of Pacifica. After we get more and more poles put up, I heard what Dr. Bott had to say and totally agree that a, that a precedence like this would just invite more people in. I know AT&amp;T has really poor coverage in Pacifica as far as their cell phones go. And what's to stop them from coming in next? Basically, we, as Dr. Bott said, we need to set a precedence. We need to make a stand here against the likes of Verizon and AT&amp;T or whoever else might want to come in. We just cannot let this happen. And I ask that to try, try, try our hardest to keep the... And I ask that to try our hardest to keep the quality of life here going. Now, the one thing I didn't hear that I was kind of concerned about was health issues. No one talked too much about these towers that they actually present a health issue. And I think that's an issue that we all as a community need to know. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Okay, we don't see any other hands raised. So I will bring it back and we will see. I think there's some time for rebuttal here. Does the appellant wish for rebuttal? I think you have 30 seconds, or is it the applicant first?
Yeah, Martin, the appellant used all of his time.
Okay. Okay, so then the applicant. Did she have two minutes left, or?
Give us a moment to bring Joanna and her team back over.
Joanna, looks like you're there.
I'm going to pass off my minute to outside counsel for Verizon Wireless, Paul Albritton, to cover the rebuttal.
Okay. Paul, you're muted.
He also looks frozen. Oh, you're unfrozen, Paul, but you're still muted.
Deputy City Clerk Brooks, can we just let them know how much time is left?
Thank you.
Yes, the applicant team has one minute for rebuttal.
Let me know when you're ready.
You're up, Paul. Go ahead.
Hi, Paul Albritton, outside counsel for Verizon Wireless. Thank you very much. I've been a wireless attorney for over 35 years, and so I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the law. There are in fact five exceptions to the limitations on zoning for local communities on wireless telecommunications and not the three suggested by Dr. Bott. I encourage you to listen to your city attorney with respect to the law. With respect to those issues, you heard a lot about the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions. This facility is extremely low wattage. It complies with FCC standards. Bill Hammett of Hammett-Nedison Consulting Engineers can speak to that. He also concluded the noise study and can answer any questions. The noise study I read had quite a bit of detail to it. In order to deny this site under federal law, you have to have substantial evidence that Verizon Wireless's facility violates your code or general plan. I don't think you've heard any of that evidence from the opponents. And in fact, staff encourages you to approve this addition of a small piece of telephone equipment on the telephone pole. I think it is the least intrusive.
Thank you.
I'm done.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, and again, prohibition of service. I can explain that further. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, so I will then close our public hearing and return to counsel for deliberations. Mike?
A question in regards to the fan. There were several of the neighbors there that were quite concerned about the noise, but I also know that that was put in there due to public comments about if there's a power outage or emergency. So I have a couple of questions for Verizon. One, what is the length of time that battery would last? And then, two, is that required for the facility to work, or is it optional? Kind of just kind of a benefit analysis. Is the noise worth, you know, three hours of airtime type of thing?
Paul Albritton, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Paul.
Can you? Joanna, you want to?
Yeah, I'm sorry. It was transitioning from panelists to attendees, so it was a little bit delayed there. But I did hear Councilmember O'Neill's question with regard to battery backup. It is not required for the facility to operate, so it won't be the batteries won't be used unless it's necessary if there's a power outage. The amount of time that it will operate on is anywhere up to six hours in the event of an emergency or planned power outage. It really just depends on during that time of power outage, how many people are using the network and the demand on that facility itself.
Is it only going to be making noise if there is an emergency?
If it's being used, yes. I believe so.
So it could, in theory, go for months with no noise.
Who, Bill Hammett, the engineer who completed the noise analysis, is probably better suited to answer that question. The noise is not related to the battery. It's related to the fans and operation for the radio equipment.
Okay, so it could actually go for months with no sound whatsoever because we have power the whole time, right?
So Bill, can you answer that question? I think he's on the line right here.
Oh, I don't see his name, sorry.
I see Hammett-Nedison.
He muted, Bill.
I know he had said that he was available and on the webinar earlier.
Sarah, can you unmute?
Can you hear me, Paul?
There we go. No, I'm on now. Thank you. So your question has to do with the noise, and the fans do run on a low basis because the power is run through the batteries and into the unit so that it's a seamless transfer if the commercial power goes out. So the fans do run. As Joanna said, the fans in the right-hand side of the cabinet are the ones that cool the radios. And so those would run also. What we did with the analysis is we looked at the worst case. We assumed the fans were running at their maximum speed all the time and then used that to assess it against the city's general plan, the draft general plan. And there's more than a 10 dB difference between the calculated levels and the worst case versus the limit. So we conclude from that that it's certainly going to comply, but probably because of the worst-case assumptions would not be audible, given that huge differential.
Okay, so the fans are not optional from what you just said? The fans are needed for the service? And they will be operating 24/7?
They would operate at different speeds depending on the heat load that's in the equipment. And for a city like Pacifica that has a temperate climate, they're not going to be running at maximum power all the time. So the levels that we assumed are conservative. We don't have a basis for knowing how much lower they're going to be, but they will definitely be lower. And it's already 10 dB below the city's general plan.
And is that whether or not there is an emergency or not?
That's correct. They just run air over the units to keep them cool. And the radios are running whether it's in an emergency or not. The battery is, as Joanna said, a smaller piece of the picture.
Okay, and just another note on that for some of the public because we had received several questions on the noise levels and that even though some of that information wasn't provided in the agenda packet because it wasn't certified and it was presented this evening by Verizon, it wasn't certified by them until the packet was, after the packet was released, just so everyone straight was looked at and the decibel levels were analyzed and determined to be compliant.
Yes, the report includes the noise reference levels by the manufacturers for the two different pieces of equipment. And then the distance is what comes into play, and the combination of those is what drives the answer. So it's fully loaded with information in the report for doing the calculations.
I just wanted to let everyone know for the purposes of the certification. Okay, Mike, any follow-up on that?
No.
Is that good? Okay. Mary, did you have something? I thought I saw your hand up.
I did not have my hand up, but I do have. You know what? Come back to me.
Okay, no problem. Mayor Lieutenant Beckmeyer?
I'll go. I have a few questions, but I want to start with one for the attorneys. And honestly, I'm not sure if it's our own city attorney, who is the person I intended to ask the question of, but perhaps is Mr. Albritton as well. The truth is that there are federal laws that say that the providers of communications services have the right to put their equipment in the public right-of-way. And what I'd like to know is how you can help me by clearly explaining for the public that that is the case. That is the problem, I think, that a number of our speakers had tonight. And they're representing tens, maybe hundreds of others who are not speaking tonight, who it's clear from the comments perceive that we have a choice in this matter and that it is we, the city council, who are not doing our job. We are not protecting our community by not telling Verizon, "Go away. No, you can't do it." And it's my understanding that there are federal laws taken up by the FCC and there are absolute restrictions on what we can and cannot do. And I'd like to know if you can give a few-sentence explanation of that.
I would be pleased to. Can you hear me? This is Paul Albritton.
Yeah.
Can you hear me? Yes, okay, great. Hi, yes, and thank you for the question. California Public Utility Code, Section 7901, was actually adopted right after the Civil War in order to provide telephone service through the state of California. And it grants telephone corporations the right to place telephone equipment in the right-of-way, in the public rights-of-way. And that's why you see telephone poles up and down the state of California. The city of San Francisco passed a law that limited the or created objective standards for determining the aesthetics of wireless facilities. That law was challenged, and the Supreme Court, in a decision, T-Mobile versus San Francisco, that came out last year, confirmed that wireless companies have the right to place telephone equipment on telephone poles like every other telephone company, but that cities can have objective aesthetic standards for determining what those poles look like and some of the location within the service area that the city is, that the carrier is trying to serve. And that's exactly what Pacifica has done in this situation. You looked at our design. You asked us to take a radio off. You asked us to make the antenna smaller. And in this current design, you've got a single telephone pole, the two-foot antenna on top. It's a replacement pole. It's stronger, and the aesthetic impact has been tremendously reduced. The utility pole is always going to be there. We're adding 10 feet with an antenna and a box, as you heard from one of the neighbors, a box that's similar to other boxes in the right-of-way. So the city has a compulsory obligation to provide space for us in the right-of-way, whether it's on a light standard or it's on a utility pole or it's a new pole that we can install ourselves. But you also have the right to exercise your police power to regulate the aesthetics of those facilities so long as it doesn't prohibit us from providing service. And that's exactly what you've done. On the federal side, I started to talk about prohibition of service and of those five limitations on cities under the Telecommunications Act. Prohibition of service prevents a municipality from essentially banning wireless service. Under the Ninth Circuit standard, that means you have to show there's a significant gap in coverage. And I think you saw that in the white area that we showed in Joanna's map. And then you have to, once you've established that there's a significant gap, you have to show that what you're proposing is the least intrusive means of filling that gap. And we've done that through our 15-site alternatives analysis. It's limited to the right-of-way because of those rights under Public Utility Code 7901, like I told you. And we've shown of all of these alternatives, and you selected a different one, which is if you're working with staff, we've selected a different one. This is clearly the least intrusive way to provide this narrow corridor of service that we're trying to provide. And it certainly is less intrusive than a new monopole or a large new facility that essentially is adding a small piece of equipment to an existing telephone pole. Now, the FCC enhanced the rights of wireless companies in 2018 with respect to small cells. And they said that rather than that significant gap least intrusive needs test, we're going to only use a materially inhibit test. And the materially inhibit test Dr. Bott spoke about but left off one part. And that is that you are materially inhibiting our service if you don't let us densify our network or enhance our existing service. We are clearly densifying and enhancing our service in this case. And so, and that order was upheld by the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals just earlier this year as being the new standard, it's materially inhibit. So under the old standard and the new standard, we've in both cases shown that denial would constitute a prohibition of service under federal law, and it compels approval. I'm happy to tell you more. I see Mayor Martin just tired of my answer, but that's, thank you for the question.
No, I think it was a great question. It was a great question, Sue, to have Paul explain in a very long way that we as a city are being perceived as inhibiting Verizon from having the right to do this, and therefore we could face some consequences. But we still can't have these conversations and still try to work it out the way we want it to work out. And city attorney, do you want to add to that?
Yes, I just wanted to add to what has already been said. We heard a lot of public comments saying, indicating that the city should decline the technology or reject the technology. And I just wanted to reiterate that, you know, the FCC has interpreted the Telecommunications Act to mean that cities, local jurisdictions, cannot effectively prohibit carriers from, as Mr. Albritton said, intensifying or densifying their networks. So, you know, the FCC and the federal government regulates federally, regulates wireless telecommunications, including small wireless facilities. And so they get to preempt local regulations that contradict federal regulations. So the city has to defer on some of these regulations to the federal government in enacting or regulating wireless facilities. And as Paul mentioned, some of the recent FCC declaratory rulings, especially the small wireless, small cell wireless order from the FCC, were reviewed and interpreted by the Ninth Circuit, the city of Portland versus the United States. And for the most part, the Ninth Circuit upheld the FCC's declaratory ruling and order related to small wireless facilities. So we, while Dr. Bott indicated that he believed that that case was being taken up to the Supreme Court, at this time, I haven't seen a petition for review by the Supreme Court being granted. And so we are left with the Ninth Circuit's interpretation and decisions relating to the small wireless order.
Thank you, attorney.
I also wanted to just say, Mayor Martin, if I may continue. I also wanted to say that there was a lot of public comments about other jurisdictions adopting regulations that prohibit wireless facilities or possibly, you know, require wireless carriers to be outside of residential areas. And, you know, I haven't looked at all other jurisdictions' regulations and some of the names that were mentioned tonight. I may not be I may not be specifically familiar, but I just want to caution council and the public that sometimes those ordinances are adopted pre, predate any case law or FCC declaratory rulings and orders. Sometimes ordinances are just left on the books and are, you know, and may have been challenged, but we're not aware of any challenges. Or they may be in, those jurisdictions may be in litigation, trying to defend their ordinances. We just don't know. So it's just important to focus on the law at hand and consider the application that is before the council, because tonight, we're not considering any, any specific new regulations or ordinance limitations.
I do have a question now. One of the callers brought up the fact that this is a new site, and so should we, shouldn't it, should we not be considering it as a new application and sending it back to planning? And Linda Jonas also brought that up, that she, you know, she's, her property is probably the most affected, and that she didn't have really enough time. And so I wasn't clear on that, like, because it is a new site, does it mean that it's a new application?
I'll, I'll speak first, if I may, Mayor Martin. And then if Mr. Murdoch or Ms. O'Connor have any follow up, I would invite them to add to my statements. So as indicated in the staff report, you know, the Pacifica Municipal Code Sections 943602 and 943208 allow the council to approve, deny, or modify the use permit application after considering the appeal. So before council tonight, in considering the appeal, you have, you have the choice of approving, denying, or modifying the use permit. So it's within council's discretion to modify the use permit by, by considering a new site as part of the appeal process. So we believe that it is within council's discretion to, to modify the site location if council believes that is appropriate. The, and then as to the notice, the Laredo, the public notice that was published and sent to residences within a certain radius area also included the consideration of the Laredo Way location as a potential alternative site. So we believe that there's been sufficient notice of the Laredo Way location to the public.
Okay. But is Christian here? I thought I saw him pop on. But is it, does it need to be a new application because it's a new site? So I didn't get that, an answer for that, really.
So, no, we, we think that council can make the modification during this appeal hearing to revise the site location. And if Mr. Murdoch is on the call, he, I would invite him or Ms. O'Connor to add.
Thank you, and good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members, Deputy Planning Director Christian Murdoch. Additional facts that supported our analysis, as explained by Ms. Bazano, included the fact that this is a unique project area. Most commonly, the city reviews projects proposed on individual parcels or lots that have been subdivided in our in private ownership. In this case, the public right of way is this continuous space in the vicinity of the area where the carrier is trying to provide coverage. And so, to that extent, the project site, as it were, is really the continuous public right of way. And it's not different than what was initially proposed in the 1307 Redwood Way application. And furthermore, this particular alternative site was included in the public record as one of the alternative sites that was analyzed and initially ruled out. But it was indicated as a potential alternative site considered for the facility. And so as we evaluated all of those particular facts under this application, we felt, as Ms. Bazano explained, it is within the council's discretion to modify the application. And we provided all legally required notification of the considered alternative, and in fact, provided more notice than would be required in terms of the radius around the project site. And in terms of time, we provided more than the 10, 10 days required under, under law.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That actually cleared it up for me. I appreciate that. You know, I, I just got to say, this is, this has been the worst thing ever. It just has. It's incredibly difficult situation that we're in. And honestly, I've never experienced anything like this. It's horrible. And we fought collectively and fought about the Redwood Way, you know? And I, it's almost like I'm speechless because I feel like I, I have nothing else to put on the table. And it's just a really awful space to be in. So I really wanted to say that to everyone, to Dr. Bott, thank you so much for all of your work and, and for, you know, mobilizing the community like you did. It's beautiful. It's a beautiful thing, you know? And, and here we are. I feel stuck. And, yeah. I feel like I've asked all the questions I can ask.
Okay.
Oh, wait, one more. Sorry, guys. What about the text message data? Verizon, can you talk to that? Because that people were like, not happy about that, and it seemed shady.
Paul Albritton here. Can you hear me? Paul Albritton?
I actually saw the text message.
I can tell you about.
And quite shocked. So go ahead, Paul.
The text message, yeah, the letter that we sent to you regarding the text message is, is very transparent. It tells you the exact message that we sent to, to Verizon Wireless customers in the zip code for Pacifica. It told you the number of responses that we got, positive and negative, as well as the messages that we received. The mess, the text message is only sent to account holders, so that we don't send it to minors or employees. And it says, reply yes if you support and prove Verizon Wireless service in Pacifica through small cells. And then it directs, it says, add a message if you'd like to support the small cells. And if you'd like more information, to click on the webpage. And 90 people clicked on that webpage and then sent us an email after reviewing the photo simulations and other information that was on the webpage. So we had 501 responses based on that. And people do write no. They, instead of yes, they say no. But it's not a survey. It's, we're reaching out to our customers to ask if they, if they believe they need enhanced service through small cells. We provide the link through the, through the webpage for them to view the images, the photo simulations, and then to go on and send us an email if they support. I think it's, it's clear to us that that helps show that there's a gap in service. People want enhanced service, and also provides the information, the background information for people to obtain from the webpage. And it's a way of our, reaching our customers. But anybody, you have to put, type in Y E S, yes, if you want to. You have to type in N O if you don't want to.
There was no option for no, though. There was no option for no, though. I'm sorry, I don't mean to argue with you, but I'm actually looking at the text message right now because I was concerned about it. This is also my neighborhood. And there is no option for no. There's only a suggestion for yes. And so it's deceptive marketing. It's like saying, do you want this? But you're not telling anybody. You also have to give them your firstborn child. I know that's an extreme example, but it is deceptive marketing. And Mary, I'm with you, point taken, and it is Verizon. And I'm not trying to knock on Verizon, but I am trying to tell you that we get it. We're not, and everybody who's objecting tonight also.
I have, I have to say, in the petitions, in the petitions circulated by the opponents, they don't, they're asking if people oppose a cell tower. On the Michael Cohen's webpage, he says, I propose a 500-foot setback. Do you propose, do you agree with my 500-foot setback? So they're really very leading questions, and I personally believe that this allows people to respond in any way they want, but we're not going to lead them to no. I have to, I have to say that straight out.
Yeah.
I do want to say that unfortunately, but I'll stop.
Well, yeah, and I wasn't saying that you guys were doing something wrong. What I was saying was please address it because folks felt that way. So.
Thanks, Mary. Sue Beckmeyer?
I had another point I wanted to ask about regarding the impact on the neighborhood during construction, you know, when this is occurring. And I realize there's some inter-agency involvement. So when, when the, in the alternative proposed, the discussion has been that a new pole would be installed. So that means taking out the old pole, putting in the new one. There's going to be some amount of impact, just as there is with any other utility work that's done in any of our neighborhoods. Is there, and this is really a question probably for planning, and maybe for the planning commissioner who's here, is there any requirement that we specify? If you, you know, have to dig up someone's yard, that you put it back, do we need to say that? Or is that something that's expected and understood? I understand that there's a public right of way component. And Christian, thank you for explaining that, that it's one contiguous, continuous right of way. So it's while to a homeowner, to a neighbor, it feels like my house, my driveway. Knowing exactly where those lines are and those easements are, and what's the public right of way, and what's my yard are not easy things for most, most homeowners and most property owners to recognize. So I guess I'm just really asking, the impact on in putting in, in doing the construction for the pole and installing the cabinet, if there needed to be, I believe Ms. Wang referred to a fence, part of a fence would need to be removed, it would be put back, yes? I mean, this is, this is the question I have about how are those impacts mitigated?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Protem. I think there's a few components to this, a few moving parts, if you will. Yes, there is, I think, a close connection that homeowners have with the areas on and around their property. The legal distinction, however, is that point, you know, along the front of the properties in this case, where the private property ends and the public right of way begins. And within the public right of way, the city's Public Works Department, primarily through the city engineer, has authority to implement the city's standards to ensure safe construction, to ensure that the final outcome of excavations and so forth are compliant with city standards and will not adversely affect public health and safety. And we do have, I believe, the city engineer on the call tonight, who can elaborate on that further if you have additional questions. In areas outside of the public right of way, construction activities are primarily regulated by the planning department. And in the case of building permit-related activity, which is likely to be the case with either of these facilities if approved, the building official has primary authority over the manner of construction. Typically, it's focused on the technical considerations with the actual construction. And so I think the third moving part here is really that civil interaction between a private property owner and the easement holder in this case. For example, the anchor easement that's associated with the pole in front of the Laredo Way alternative site. And so to the extent some encroachments into that easement may need to be removed, it's a, it's a relationship between the easement holder undertaking the construction in reliance on the easement, and the private property owner on whose property the easement is held. And so I think going above and beyond what the minimum obligations are is something that Verizon will need to speak to as far as their best practices and their good neighbor policies when undertaking construction.
I'm not sure who the right person would be to direct that question to.
Yeah, I'd like to speak to that. Yeah. On the construction side, you know, Verizon is looking to be a good partner, so we would want to replace the condition of the existing conditions, at least at a bare minimum to what is already existing, and but also look to improve it if we can, right? If we had to tear up, replace part of the fence in order to accommodate conduit, we would be providing a new fence, a more stable fence. If we tear up landscaping, we will replace it as necessary. And looking at the photos of the base of the pole, there is no landscaping there, but I mean, we wouldn't leave the condition in that area messy, dirty. We have requirements and standards to make sure that the, you know, it's at least the construction is as least intrusive to the residences as possible.
Thank you.
Sue Barlow, did you have a question?
Yeah. Um, oh, sorry. Can you, I, no, I just want to say that I agree. Sorry, I'm stumbling because this has been one of the hardest things that has come to council in four years that I've been here. I really appreciate all of the neighbors, Dr. Bott, everybody who put their time and energy into this, as, as we did too. And I appreciate how Mayor Protem Beckmeyer stated the facts here, so that everybody could hear the facts, that this really, I'm sorry, but this is not our choice. We do not have the choice in this matter. And it's a pretty hard situation to be in as a person and as a council member. So that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Sue. So is the, I feel like the question was asked, but I don't feel like I got a good response. The battery backup system, is it worth it? If it's in the event of an emergency and it doesn't last that long, maybe because there are not other towers nearby? Is that Joanna's question?
Oh, Paul, and I'll jump in if I may, just for a moment. The battery backup lasts for six hours after the power goes out. If it's a PG&E, PSPS, people are prepared. If it's a flat-out emergency like a fire, those six hours are absolutely critical. And I'm up here in Santa Rosa, I got to tell you, I had to evacuate twice when only my Verizon Wireless cellphone was working. And that critical period of time when you have to evacuate in a crisis is, is true. Now, it is an option to you. It does add fans to the system. As you heard from Bill Hammett, that noise level is, I believe, is 53 dB at the property line, which is well within your general plan limitations. And I wouldn't think it's not a concern. But we build many small cells without batteries. Verizon Wireless has generators in all of its facilities in Northern California with about an 80% penetration, and our macro cells will continue to run. But as you saw, we've got a gap in the Terranova Boulevard corridor that would not have service, which could be tremendously important, emergency calls during the six hours following an earthquake or evacuation due to a fire coming down the corridor.
In the longer term, power outage, it's six hours is mostly what we get?
Yes. The only thing that will provide additional power would be generator, and that would create more noise and more impact.
Okay. So I would, I would propose to the council, seeing if, you know, this battery pack was, is not a mandatory part of this proposal this evening. So it could be something that we might consider taking out or, you know?
In, let me ask a question of Paul or the engineers that are here, whatever. If there was a power outage and it is, let's say, a fire emergency or some other type of emergency, do you then switch to like, an AT&amp;T customer would be able to use your tower because it's the emergency, or is that only 911?
It, any 911 call would go through our network, but it's only, it doesn't switch an entire company's customers. Just that somebody dialing 911 gets access to the, whatever network that their phone is compatible with.
Okay, so then, like, me calling my kid to try to see if they're okay would not work if I was AT&amp;T under a tower. It would just be the 911, okay? I would suggest or propose, a while back, when we were having the Council of Cities dinners, they did do a whole president whole presentation on emergency procedures that are being developed in San Mateo County, which are also piggybacking into Santa Clara and, and San Francisco. That, and it would entail going online and they would actually tell you what route you would take to get out of Dodge. So I would think six hours, given the configuration and the fact our fire ratings in terms from the California PUC. It would probably be worth, you know, especially since most of the, some of these fans are not going to run until there's a power outage. And there's fans that we have no option with.
Well, that, that's not true. They, they are gonna run if, they, we already heard this evening that they are gonna run.
Well, but right, they're gonna run no matter what we do, but you're, we have to have if there's a facility, there has to be fans. But is there addition? Okay, so I don't think, I don't know if this is even the relevant because are there additional fans in order to have the six hour battery? Or is he's the same fans that are already there?
I'm happy to address that. There, there are two different sets of fans. One set is to move air across the radios that are often on the pole. But the desire was to put those in a, in a ground mounted cabinet. So those need little fans to run air over them. And those would run faster and a little noisier when it's really hot, but they would run. The smaller fan would be on the, on the battery backup. And that would also run faster and louder when it's, when it's hot out. But it would also run. So it's, it's not fans or no fans. You're always gonna have some fans for the radio units. And that's a, a, a larger component than the fans that run for the battery backup.
But both, but you, 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 if you have the facility, you have to have both sets of fans.
That's correct. For the occasions when it is very hot outside and the equipment, it runs the risk of getting overheated.
Okay, so the option of fans is mute. They have to be there if the facility is built.
Right. Yeah, it's gonna be part of the, it's part of the battery pack. It's, that's what side of it. Okay, so I got that question answered. Most of the other questions were answered. However, we didn't talk really about the logistics of potentially moving the pole. Is that something that we could talk, we should talk about now or is that something that could be worked out outside of this discussion between Verizon and our planning department? That the council's request is to move it at least five feet outside of that garden area, that little fence there? Christian.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think as we consider this option to potentially relocate the pole when it's replaced. I think as the applicant has indicated, it may be technically feasible. However, we are not able to ascertain whether it will be technically feasible at tonight's hearing. Certainly, there are PG&E requirements which must be met. There are unknowns with respect to the ability of the lines in that area to achieve proper tension within PG&E specifications. If the pole was to be relocated, there's no guarantee as to the soil conditions or other structural factors that wouldn't enable a pole to be installed in an alternate location. And there's also uncertainties with respect to obtaining easements for the guy wire or wires which would be required for the pole. From most likely the Pacifica School District, which is the real property owner adjacent to that, the area being discussed. And so while it may be technically feasible upon further evaluation, those uncertainties make me feel uncomfortable with a staff recommendation in favor of such a relocation. The worst case scenario would be to have to revisit this whole situation again potentially. And have the public go through this and have the council go through this type of public hearing process again in the event that facility had to change back, for example.
Can we say that we would like that to happen? You will do your best to make it happen and hopefully the Pacifica School District will understand where, where we are and we won't have to go through this again, but you will do your best to work with Verizon and Verizon, you hear us, you hear the community. If we can get a few things out of this that are positive, big wins, then you will be looked upon favorably in our community. So can we say that, Christian, at least tonight, like as a point of recommendation?
You know, I think certainly the intent is clear such that there would in effect be both placements approved by the city council. I think I would ask Ms. Bazano to offer an opinion on our ability to approve both of those in that fashion that you explained.
So just so that I understand, Mayor Martin, what, what you're considering, that would be some type of condition of approval that indicates that if the pole can be moved five feet away from the 1334 Laredo Way location that and that PG&E approves such a relocation that the pole be relocated?
Yes, but we want to do that without having to come back here. If it's possible, great. If it's not, then, well, we understand, but we're really rooting for this to happen. Sue Vardalos, am I saying that correctly?
That would be our preference.
I'm wondering if it would be possible just to indicate with the condition of approval that during replacement of the pole, the pole shall be relocated towards alternative site 11 to the maximum extent practicable as determined by the planning director and the city engineer. If that might be sufficient to effectuate the council's intent and allow the staff to work with the applicant if the facility is approved, to work out the details and the feasibility at that, at that time.
Sounds perfect to me.
Right, with the clear understanding that it's, if it can't be worked out, if it can't be extended, it's not going to come back.
Yeah, i- if possible, that's all.
But we want to know that you try, I mean, just let us, keep us posted, right? That at least, that, you know, we don't say at least, but maybe you try and it works out great because we know Verizon and PG&E and the City of Pacifica all have a wonderful working relationship and want to maintain that. So, um, thank you. Okay, so the other thing is for this battery area. We heard a lot about, you know, the aesthetics. Can we make, also make a recommendation that we try to like box it in with maybe, you know, redwood to the extent possible? And I think there's a mural indication at some point in the, in the application that would allow that? Can we make that recommendation also?
Madam Mayor, I would just suggest maybe hearing from the applicant. What types of additional screening options may be feasible for them to construct? There sometimes are considerations as to constrained right of way or the need to have certain clear working space on different sides of equipment cabinets. Perhaps they can provide some additional context.
Joanna, can you come through for us here?
I'm happy to. So like Mr. Murdock mentioned, we do need to maintain access to the cabinet in order to contain radios, you know, address anything that's inside of the cabinet. So our screening limitations are minimal. I would say that in prior installations of this type in other communities for ground cabinets, Verizon has been open to allowing the local community to put artwork on the cabinet. And that's, you know, discretionary for the community as to what they want to see. It's been local artwork that we've seen. I would probably just want to make sure that the paint doesn't have any impact on the ground cabinet. Want to run that through by construction and make sure it doesn't cause overheating in any way. That would be my main concern, not to cover any of the air vents. But beyond that, I think.
Here, there's already a condition of approval that provides for the cabinet to initially be painted white, but for the city to be able to make the cabinet either green or tan. And where Verizon Wireless consents to local artists wrapping or decorating the box. That's one of the conditions of approval.
Can, can we wrap in a natural wood and then paint that?
Part of the, part of the issue. Part of the issue is the, is the narrowness of the right of way at that location. It is a continuous strip, as mentioned, but it's fairly narrow. So the cabinet is set centered in there. There's less than a foot behind the cabinet to get to the property line. So you could put a redwood fence on either side. It's more problematic on the front because there are doors that would need to be opened for access. And the behind might provide some additional attenuation for the neighbor, but that would probably have to be on the school district's property rather than it only in the right of way due to how narrow it is.
What about a crate type thing that slides over the top and you could lift it off and it would have slats in it? So you're, you're, it could still breathe and get the airflow.
Well, I certainly can't speak for Verizon, but I'm sure that, you know, that they could pursue in some fashion some of those ideas to the extent that, that it turns out to be feasible from a maintenance standpoint.
Okay.
All right, well, Joanna, Paul, we're, we're really, we want you to give us some, some hope here that at least we know we can paint on it, but we'd rather, we'd rather see something a little bit more aesthetically pleasing and just take that with you and, and remember us. So, okay, I think I covered all my things here and I want everybody on this call to know that I have one of these towers going in across from my house. And I had to recuse myself from this last vote. And after going through this, unfortunately, sometimes you're put in a position where you have to make a decision, which is really not awesome for a few, but the, the best for the greater good. And I don't mean health wise. A guy came on tonight, I think his name was Michael, said he was really surprised that nobody talked about the health. We've been through it with the health. I'm getting chills just thinking about it because you know, I'm so close. And it hits home and I've got two little ones and I've got a, a one close to my child's head too. And unfortunately, after having to sit that last one out because it was too close to home. And if I had to vote on it, I would also probably have to vote for it because being in the position that I am, the City of Pacifica, sort of our, our hands are tied and the best example I can sort of give you is district elections. We were sort of forced into this really weird situation in which we were we would, we would be more at risk not doing it than, than we would as a city. And in this case, the federal government is, is the entity that, that we have to comply with. So we, somebody said you want us to try our hardest and trust me, we all did. I mean, it was at a point where we probably tears in every one of our eyes. And we are with you, every one of us, and we've done everything we can to get it away from everybody's heads and, and now here we are. So does anyone have anything else?
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to jump on the bandwagon and say, you know, when I was on the school board, I had a vote to close two schools. And now, you know, sometimes you, you just have to react to stuff and, and enforce the laws or whatever that, and for stuff that is beyond your control. You cannot change it. It's the law and we have to approve it. And believe me, I think the council and our planning staff and even, excuse me, even Verizon has worked with us and put as much lipstick on this pig as we can. Okay? And that's all it is. And if you want, I can make the motion to move on or?
Say something.
Oh, okay. Sure. Go ahead.
I was gonna say yes, go ahead.
Oh, yes, to make to the motion? Okay, um, let's see, let's see.
And before you do that, Mike, I know there's somebody with their hand raised and unfortunately you missed the opportunity to speak this evening. It was earlier, so we had to.
You spoke already.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so let's see, I did have it here, but it moved. Okay.
I'll do it.
Okay, sorry.
I just want to say though, one sentence before that. We have before us a decision that is not at all easy to make, but make it we must. That is exactly what everyone has just said. And so with that, I would like to move to adopt.
Sue Beckmeyer, real quick, can I just also add, and this is just for everyone's information who just heard us all pour our hearts out, that this evening we also did approve to, for us to write a letter of support for HR 530, the Accelerating Wires Broadband Development by Empowering Local Communities Act of 2019, which could come to fruition and give us more local power over this stuff. So just take that for what it's worth. It's, it's a glimmer of hope. Sorry, go ahead.
It's perfectly great that you brought that up and, and we also have amended our work plan to ask staff to write an ordinance update for wireless communications facilities in response to community concerns. And we certainly have heard from many in the community about other, other jurisdictions. And City Attorney Bazano mentioned that, you know, there are different circumstances in different communities, but our intention is to have Pacifica's ordinance be as strong as it can be in light of federal law. So we're doing the best that we can do in a difficult situation. And with that, I will make a motion as soon as I get the language in front of me. I move to adopt a resolution denying the appeal and modifying the planning commission's approval and approving use permit UP dash 102 dash 18 as revised by the alternative design submitted by the applicant, which would include a canister antenna mounted directly on top of a replacement utility pole and associated ground mounted equipment included but not limited to a radio cabinet and battery backup system in the Laredo Way Public Right Of Way approximately 760 feet northwest of the intersection of Terranova Boulevard and Laredo Way in the vicinity of 1334 Laredo Way, APN 023 dash 543 dash 230 in Pacifica. Subject to the conditions of approval and finding the project exempt from the C, from the CQI Attachment A, which is appended to the motion. And I mean, to the staff report. And I wanted to know, do I need to append the part about moving the pole if at all possible?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer. Mr. Murdock has sent me the proposed language, so I would suggest the following. You would amend the conditions of approval to add the following. Prior to issuance of a building permit, applicant shall relocate the WCF for wireless communications facility toward alternative site number 11 to the maximum extent practicable to the satisfaction of the planning director and city engineer. Period. In the event relocation is not feasible, the WCF, Wireless Communications Facility, may be constructed where indicated at alternative site number 10 as proposed by the applicant.
So with that amendment, that is the motion.
Seconded.
Roll call vote, please. Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Beer?
Yes.
Councilmember Vardalos?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
And that passes with a vote of five to zero.
All right, well, thank you, everyone. Hope we can all sleep well tonight and know that we are with you.
Good night.
Good night. It is nine forty-nine PM. Thank you.